Okay, good evening, everyone. Um, tonight, we're going to, before we have our regular business meeting, we're going to have our, uh, public hearing where we'll have the budget presented, and then we'll have our candidate night. Um, so I'd like to call our public hearing to order, and I'd like us to please stand up and start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and one for all.
Okay, and the first presentation we'll have tonight is our preliminary budget with Dr. Orlagio and our Assistant Superintendent for Business, Mr. DiAmro.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, so Matt and I would just like to walk you through the budget that was adopted by the Board of Education, and our first goal that we anchor upon is to promote cost effectiveness, develop and manage a budget that provides a quality education in a fiscally responsible manner. The goals of the budgeting process this year are to maintain the quality programs across the district, to meet the needs of all students and staff socially, emotionally, and culturally, while providing access and inclusivity for all to achieve equity. We also continue to focus on the safety and security aspects across the district, making sure that we're meeting all of the applicable mandated standards. Again, the goal is to keep our tax levy within the property tax cap calculation, which Matt will address a little bit later, to identify alternate funding sources and cost-saving measures such as Title I grants and IDEA grants. And again, the last bullet, this will be the final year we're able to utilize our pandemic funding. So this proposed budget will reflect our state aid that we are receiving. It reflects retirement salary savings for those, uh, individual staff members that are retiring with new staff that we are hiring for replacements. It addresses the unfunded mandates and our special education costs for our students with disabilities. It also supports the continuation of our lottery-based UPK or pre-kindergarten program. This budget also includes an additional high school counselor, an additional high school physical education teacher due to enrollment, an elementary reading intervention teacher due to some literacy needs at one of our elementary schools, a part-time district-wide school psychologist with increased referrals for testing for our youngest learners, and also a middle school aide to support some services and programs at the middle level. In addition, last year, we funded a portion of positions that were funded initially with our federal funding. These positions are the intervention, uh, specialists, uh, excuse me, teachers, our ESOL teacher, an enrichment teacher, an elementary teacher, and a social worker. So this is the second half, um, the second year that we funded the second half of those positions to make sure that they're in the budget to continue. So Matt's gonna talk a little bit about the proposed budget.
All right, the proposed budget for twenty-three, twenty-four school year, uh, is proposed at ninety-nine million, two-hundred-and-fifty-eight thousand, two-hundred-and-twenty dollars, which is an increase of just under, uh, four and a half million dollars. It represents about a four-point-seven-five percent increase from the prior-year budget, um, which is well below inflation, which was about eight percent for last year. This budget also, uh, has revenue in it, um, made up primarily of state aid, which is the biggest piece of our revenue, and also local tax levy. Uh, as you can see in the revenue line, our, our total revenues are up significantly. There's about a nine percent increase on that group of revenue codes, and the tax levy is proposed to go up about two-point-seven-seven percent, so significantly less, uh, even though those are both major components of the revenue. So this, this is a breakdown of our budget into three major components, program, capital, and administrative. So our program component is everything that is basically in the school building. It also includes our transportation, uh, and it makes up the majority of our budget. So in line with prior year, it's just over seventy-two percent of the total budget, so it's by far the largest portion of the budget. Um, the capital component of our budget is related to the, the maintenance of our buildings, also the purchase of new school buses. Those costs are all in that component of the budget, uh, and that's roughly the same. It's gone down, uh, just a little bit from last year. And then our administrative component, which is district-wide and building-level administration, uh, is also down just a little bit in terms of how much of the budget it makes up. And so estimated revenue, how we pay for the budget. As I said, the two major pieces are our state aid revenue that we receive and also our local tax levy. So state aid this year is, is budgeted at fifty million, eight-hundred-and-nineteen thousand, which, like I said, is over fifty percent of our budget. So that, over the last few years, we've increased our reliance on New York State to provide funding, um, which is good when they have the money to pay for it, but as always, it's something that we have to be mindful of, um, how heavily we rely on that because it needs to be sustainable in order for our budget to be sustainable. Um, the next major component is our proposed tax levy. That's local tax dollars that's paid through school taxes, and that's about forty-one percent of our budget. Uh, so every dollar that we spend, forty-one cents, comes from local taxpayers. And we always keep that in mind as we're creating the budget and spending throughout the year. That's always something that's very, uh, forefront of our minds. Uh, then other revenues that we have, we receive from Monroe County sales tax revenue. Uh, this next year, it's estimated to be about four million dollars. So just four percent of our total budget comes from that. Um, but again, that's a very small piece compared to that state aid and our proposed tax levy. Those really represent the majority of the budget. Uh, we also use fund balance, which is our savings accounts. Um, that's money that, at the end of the year, if it's left over, is applied to the next year's budget. So we've, we've kept that line at one-point-seven percent of the budget. Uh, and also, we have a, a lot of other miscellaneous revenue that altogether makes up one-point-six percent of the budget. So there are a lot of very small revenues that help fund the budget. Okay, so this year is a little bit unique in that all four towns in the school district have a different equalization rate. And what that means to most homeowners is they see a different rate on their tax bill than in other towns. So each town has a, a different rate than every other town, and none of them are a hundred percent. So we have five different tax rates that people will see on their tax bill. You'll see publicized in the link and on our website. Um, what we've tried to do is make it comparable. Really, from comparing to last year to this year, the town of Riga should see a tax rate decrease. Ogden, due to changes in equalization rate, will see an increase in their tax rate, but that's mainly being driven by the change in the equalization rate. So if you live in Ogden, uh, last year, your equalization rate was eighty-two percent. This year, it's dropped to sixty-nine percent. So that's driving a lot of that change in the rate. Uh, Chila has a, a slight increase in the rate, eight cents per hundred thou- per thousand, and then Sweden has a decrease in their rate of ninety-three cents per thousand. So contingent budget, if the budget are, is to be, is defeated on May sixteenth at the vote, the Board of Education has two options of how to proceed. Option one is they can have another vote, run the same budget proposed, or make adjustments and propose a new budget. Uh, the other alternative is to go straight to a contingent budget. And under a contingent budget, the tax levy can't increase at all. And there's also a few other items that have to come out, so certain things can't be in there. Um, some raises, raises for non-union employees, certain equipments and things like that that aren't, that don't pertain to health and safety have to be removed. Um, when we go through that exercise of removing that, the budget would actually decrease, I'm sorry, would result in a decrease of one-point-two million dollars. So we have a slightly smaller budget as a result of being under a contingent budget.
So our first proposition for our proposed budget for the upcoming twenty-three, twenty-four school year is ninety-nine million, two-hundred-and-fifty-eight thousand, two-hundred-and-twenty dollars. Our second proposition would authorize the district to purchase eight sixty-six passenger school buses at an estimated maximum cost of one-point-three-five million dollars. And this year, we do have a third proposition, which would authorize the district to purchase the property located at five-seven-eight-eight Buffalo Road for a price not to exceed two-hundred-and-eighty-five thousand. And also, um, I know that you probably can't see this well, but there's a map included, and this is posted on our district website, so you could take a closer look at the property at the front, uh, as you're looking at the high school right to its left. And we had talked about in the Phase Six Capitol Project to improve the exit off of Buffalo Road in front of the high school. So we are working with the New York State Department of Transportation to improve that exit lane. Um, we are having a few struggles with the Department of Transportation and are looking to move that up to the top of the knoll so that we can add that additional exit, or at least broaden where, um, our students and families come in to a separate exit where they come out. So we're still working on that, but that is the area that we would like to do that, so we would need to remove the home. So just for full transparency on what we're looking to do. This year, we do have three open seats for our Board of Education for a term of three years each, and we do have four candidates that you will meet in a few moments. Our first candidate on the ballot is Amy Wilson, incumbent, Board of Education member. Kevin Johnson, Michelle Aloy, incumbent Board of Education member, who came on this year to replace Kristen Brumbau, who left the board to move, um, out of state with her family. And Leah Mordarana is our fourth candidate. And again, in just a few moments, you will meet all of our candidates. Voter qualifications, in order to vote, you must be a U.S. citizen, at least eighteen years of age, and a resident of our school district at least thirty days prior to the vote. And our budget vote, as Matt mentioned previously, is May sixteenth, from noon until nine in our middle school north cafeteria right next door, uh, door thirty-one. So at this time, um, we don't have any still, um, no submissions online, uh, with our online, uh, folks. Is there anyone in the audience that has any question for us regarding the budget?
Yes, my name is Richard Valentine. Proposition number two, what part of that money is there to be for electric buses other school districts are going to?
At, at this time, we are not investing in electric buses, so none of our budget this year will go toward electric buses, the school budget.
Why not?
So we do not think that we're in a place yet to purchase. The Board of Education did have the opportunity to see an electric bus a few months ago, March, February? March, at Transportation Building, there's actually, uh, one bus that's over in Byer and Bergen, and they brought that over to us to take a look at. Um, we have talked with our colleagues, uh, in neighboring districts, and, um, there are some struggles with getting enough, uh, electricity to their areas. We do not, at this time, have the underground cabling put in, but however, in our Phase Six Capitol Project that our community supported a year and a half ago, there, uh, the parking lot at Transportation has to be renovated. Uh, so while we're doing that, we are putting in the underground, um, ability to add that electric wiring for future. But at this time, we don't have any electric buses in our proposed project. Yes?
I'm Kathleen Valentine.
Yeah, hi.
We're tech teams.
I'm glad to have you.
I have a question with the new road that you're widening of the campus school. Will that at any point connect to the main campus on the longer street which we live on? Um, so that when traffic comes in during the daytime with the buses, the parents, the construction vehicles, the garbage trucks, it's all going in and out the same way? Is there any plan to connect that road so that at some point, some future, there's an entrance to the campus that takes people off in, onto a different road?
So we have a long-term plan. This is part of a short-term plan to get us to have an inter-campus roadway that will take us all the way across to the transportation facility to West Side Drive. So we do have a long-range plan. I don't think it's anything that was going to happen in the next two to three years, but potentially eight to ten years perhaps, um, if the community supports that. Um, we do have, um, some drawings, uh, and the board has looked at previously that would take us through now a portion of the campus and then a section at a time. But that would be the ultimate goal, that we could get more of our through traffic in our campus in a safe manner and have an additional exit off of West Side. So we would have both, we would have three ways. So on Buffalo, obviously where you are, on Fairbanks Road, and then on West Side.
That would be a very safety-conscious plan because right now, there are events going on and even sometimes just in the, anytime the school buses start running, it can be very chaotic. And even now, kids are starting to ride their bus, they're, they're riding their, right?
Oh, the spring.
And drink, and we hold our breath because these kids, there's no sidewalk. There's no other alternative but to be on the same path, and now there's construction vehicles, and we even watch the garbage trucks come in and out, and people are just going every which way. It was very helpful when you opened the other, uh, drive.
Yes.
Fortunately, people often come out of that and turn left and go towards West Side Drive, which adds another piece.
We've been trying to work on that. Um, actually, that was brought back to our attention because initially that was a right turn only, and then I think some of our families decided to turn left after some training. So we were doing some retraining around the safe, the safe exit, but yes, that was brought to our attention.
But we support anything that can be done to alleviate that because it's just so chaotic. Just the track meet that has helped this weekend was crazy. Drivers who had no idea where they were going because they were coming from other school districts.
Correct.
And it, it, it was, we just held our breath that somebody was, yeah, from shelter there, so.
Okay, thank you. It will take a little bit, but we do have a drawing of, of that and hoping that we can get there. Thank you. Any other que- yes?
Proposition number three.
Yes.
The district owns at least fifty acres unused, and there was a plan to go around that property.
Correct.
Off of Percy Road leading in and around that piece of property. Why is it necessary to buy that piece of property?
The Department of Transportation, um, has told us we cannot do that. They have told us that the sight line in one direction is less than safe in their opinion, and they are not allowing us to do that. Uh, we had a meeting with them actually a week ago. We brought them here with ourselves, our architect, our campus construction team, as well as a few of our legislators, to have a more in-depth conversation about why we need an exit onto Buffalo Road that's safer. And they have verbally, tentatively agreed that at this exact location, at the top of the knoll, uh, I forgot the exact, the sight lines are the best they would allow if we moved the whole drive up and were to expand a little bit. Other than that, they are not giving us authorization to add the exit. We had to actually pull that off of our submission from Phase Six to the State Education Department so it didn't hold up our whole project, so that is the State Department of Transportation.
So the purpose of buying this piece of property is to knock the building down and use that as an entrance way?
A safe exit and, right, redirect our entrance and a safe exit to get us to our roadway across campus. Initially, yes, we would have been happy to have our initial plan and have it being reviewed right now, but we could not get authorization from DOT.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Anything else? All right, thank you, everyone. I'm gonna call Mrs. Dillon back up. Um, this will end this portion of the budget presentation.
All right, so at this point, I'm gonna close the public hearing on the budget, and we'd like to do the presentation of the candidates for the Board of Education. So if all the candidates could come up, please, and I'm gonna introduce our board clerk, Michelle, to come up, and she will actually, um, ru- do the, uh, board candidate night. Oh, there you are, okay.
All right, so let me, you want me to close this all out, right? So you want us up, um?
Yep.
Good evening. While the candidates are taking their seats, I want to share with the audience that the process to determine the order is a random draw and in no way reflects who may be the best or least candidate for the board. The procedure we will follow tonight is The procedure we will follow tonight is that I will first introduce all of the candidates, asking them to stand briefly while their name is called. I will then go back to each candidate and allow them to address the audience, share a little about themselves and why they are running for the position on the Board of Education. After each candidate has had the opportunity to do so, we will open the floor to questions. Questions will be alternated between the pre-submitted questions and questions from those attending this session, both online and in person. Questions must be applicable to all four candidates and will be screened for their appropriateness. In addition, questions similar in topic will be consolidated. Please be aware that all candidates will be given the opportunity to answer all questions, regardless of whether the questions were asked of a specific candidate. For this reason, we are asking all candidates to keep your responses brief so we may answer as many questions as possible in the time allotted. We have allotted forty minutes this evening for the candidate forum portion of the meeting. When we reach the forty-minute mark, regardless of which candidate is answering a question, all candidates will be permitted to answer that question, and then we will close the hearing. This year, we have three three-year board member terms open and four candidates running for these three positions. In the Churchill-Chilei District, candidates run at large, which means the three candidates with the most number of votes will fill the three-year terms. When they turned in their candidate petition, each candidate also turned in answers to the same set of questions. Their responses are printed in the District Link Newsletter and have also been made available on the district website located on the Business Department webpage under the Budget Development tab. I will now introduce each of the candidates, asking them to stand momentarily and then go back to each one and allow them to address the audience. In ballot order, we have Amy Wilson, Kevin Johnson, Michelle Aloy, and Leah Mordarana. We will now hear from each candidate, starting with Amy. Amy, please provide a brief introduction and identify why you are interested in serving on the Board of Education.
Sure. So good evening, everybody. My name is Amy Wilson. I am actually running for my fifth term as a school board member. I first came on the school board in 2011, and I realize I probably should have updated my picture because I don't really look quite like that anymore. But I was approached at that time to run, and it was really something I hadn't thought of doing. A lot of people get into board work after they serve on PTOs or those types of things. But I wanted to be able to serve my community. It was something that my husband and I had tried to instill in our own children, so I decided I needed to kind of walk the walk. I am a public school, middle school teacher, and one of the things about surviving thirty years working in a middle school is you function as a team. And the board is kind of the team, and I love that kind of work. It's very goal-driven. We have to collaborate. We have to make, critically think about decisions. We have to sometimes take our time and really listen to each other's point of views, and that is something that I feel I have the skill set for. And so that's why I'd love to continue this work if the community so chooses me to do. And I, it is a challenge, but it is something that I really, truly enjoy, and I'm very passionate about doing what's best for all kids here at Churchill.
Okay. Thank you, Amy. Kevin?
Yes, my name is Kevin Johnson. I've lived in the district for just under twenty years. In 2003, when my wife and I got married, we went all over Monroe County, and we decided we liked the balance of things here in the Churchill-Chilei School District, so we opted to build here. My path to running for the school board actually started fifteen years ago. I started coming to some board meetings fifteen years ago. I came to three with the intention of actually running for the Board of Education at that time, and I realized that I didn't actually have the time to commit to it. If I'm going to do this, I'm going to make sure that I have the time to do it, and I want to do it to the best of my ability. And I think it's unfair at that time if I had run for the Board of Education because I know I wouldn't have been able to do the best job. Why I'm running? Well, lots of people nowadays just don't want to be bothered. I have several people that I've spoken to that I think would be great Board of Education members, and they, they're like, no, I just don't want to be bothered with it. I don't want to be that person. I want to be involved in creating a great environment in our school district and the long-term success of the school district. There's lots of things that you need to be, be in order to be a Board of Education major, or major, sorry, in order to be a Board of Education member. Many of them, I believe, I have. I'm able to actually listen to people to understand what they're saying. Unfortunately, too many times in our society now, people just listen to respond to the other person. Over the years, I've realized that, sometimes I still do that, but I've realized and concentrated and thought about the fact that when you're listening to somebody and it's important to them, you owe it to them to actually listen, to understand them, rather than to listen, to discredit and respond. I also, oftentimes, when you come across a problem at work or at home or anyplace, people, instead of looking to solve the problem, they look to blame, blame somebody for the problem. When I'm confronted with a problem, I like to figure out how to solve it. It's not necessarily about who's at fault for the problem. It's here we are, this is our situation, we need to finish it and take care of it. I'm also not afraid to admit when I'm wrong or ask questions if I don't know what I'm talking about or what's being talked about. If somebody's presenting something and I don't understand it, I'm not afraid to raise my hand and say, hey, listen, can you please explain to me what it is that you're talking about? And I also, over the years, have done a lot of things where you have to work collaboratively with people. I got to admit, when I was younger, it was very difficult. But as you, as time has gone on, I've worked with people, organizations, and I feel like I'm excel at working with other people toward a common, common cause.
Okay. Thank you, Kevin. Michelle?
My name is Michelle Aloy. I have been living in the district for ten years. I have three children in the district, elementary school, one at Chestnut Ridge. I have a middle school student and also a high school student. They are my main motivation for running for the board, so really wanted the opportunity to be involved. I've done a lot of volunteer work with sports organizations and also with Odyssey of the Mind in the past. Also, you know, volunteer in the schools where I can with supporting, you know, chaperoning trips and anything I can to get involved. But really want to spend my time to, you know, be able to serve the community, certainly make sure that, you know, not only my kids, but their friends and all of the kids in the district have the best experience, have the best resources and support that they need to thrive in their education. So something I'm really passionate about. In my professional experience, I work on an international team. I have a lot of experience in, you know, collaborating across different diverse groups, cultures. I work as a consultant, so my job is to solve problems. I manage a budget, you know, for our company within one of our international regions. So I have a lot of experience from a business perspective that I think also will, you know, certainly help, you know, me be a good team member on the board. I actually have had the privilege of serving on the board since December. So I had an opportunity, I actually ran last year for the first time. Unfortunately, was not elected, but really, you know, wanted to show my commitment. When I heard there was a vacancy, certainly put my name out there and am really excited that I've had the opportunity, so I'd really love to be able to continue that.
Thank you, Michelle. Leah?
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name's Leah Mordarana, and I have three boys. They are ages eleven, nine, and almost six next week. They too are my motivation for being a part of the board. We actually relocated from, my, my husband and I relocated from Florida a few years ago, and we have just loved being a part of the district. We've become involved very quickly. My husband coaches multiple sports teams. I actually served for, as a children's director at our church for some time, and I also have volunteered weekly in the classroom as a literacy volunteer. We just have really enjoyed being a part of the district and all of the programs that are involved here. From a professional perspective, I think my background lends itself to being a part of a group like this. I have experience in HR consulting and have worked as a HR benefits and compensation manager for over ten years. I also, I feel that that gives me an opportunity to know what it's like to work with varying perspectives and come to a common consensus, solving solutions that, that meet, that represent varying perspectives. And I think working in the classroom as the literacy volunteer has given me an opportunity to really understand some of the challenges that teachers are facing and kids are facing, especially post-pandemic. So that's a passion of mine, is just making sure that we really do what we can to support teachers and kids to bring them, not just get them back to speed, but really thriving in the classroom environment.
Okay. Thank you, Leah. Our next question, we're going to start with Kevin, okay? Kevin, please identify one main issue that you deem to be a priority for the district in the next three years.
So our district, as with every other district, has had issues with keeping good people. It's not, it's not a unique problem to our district. I've heard of people everywhere, losing teachers. I know one of my children, at the beginning of this year, with one, one day into the semester, found out that their teacher wasn't there, they had moved to a different district. I think it's going to be a challenge, but I think we need to create a very tight community within our teacher, within the school district with the teachers. I think that hiring teachers that are actually willing to be involved in the community, we have, we have wonderful, lots of wonderful teachers and coaches and advisors, but I think that as a school district, we need to focus a little bit on bringing in staff that is going to become involved and entrenched in the community rather, and that way, they don't necessarily want to leave the school district. And we just need to do things to build, build the community within all of our staff, not just, not just school, not just teachers, not just aides. We need bus drivers, support staff. We need to, in order to function as a unit, the school district needs to be cohesive with, with employees.
Okay. Thank you, Kevin. Michelle?
I think one of the major issues that we're facing in the next three years and probably still beyond is just the mental health, emotional health, and overall, you know, learning abilities of our students. I think we're seeing, you know, such a wide range of challenges at all age levels. I know the district is working really hard to, you know, support the students and certainly to put programs in place to make sure that we're providing the resources we need to, you know, help kids really be their best. But I think that is going to be, you know, continue to be an issue, especially when you're trying to balance resources, space, programs, funding. So to me, that, that is really the biggest issue of balancing that priority with being able to accommodate it within our means.
Thank you, Michelle. Leah?
Yeah, I agree. I think one of the, just to help, I think one of the biggest issues is helping, like I said, people, our, our kids to catch up after the last few years and giving teachers the resources. And one of the things that I think is a positive within the district is there is a lot of parental involvement. There's a lot of great volunteers that we have. So I think building on that is something that we can continue to do. And it's a cost-effective, budget-friendly way to really give teachers those resources. For example, with the literacy volunteer program, it's giving teachers an extra set of hands in the classroom by involving parents, and we go through a full training for it. So, you know, they know that the, the person that's volunteering in their room is giving them, helping them in, in meeting the educational needs and goals of their classroom and really giving them some more time to focus specifically on kids that need extra help. So I think contributing to programs like that and really recruiting for that and expanding upon it is one way that we can meet that goal.
Thank you, Leah. Okay, we're going to, oh, I'm so sorry.
That's okay. In agreement with the people sitting up here, I do feel that the, the biggest challenge, and I see this every day in my, at school, is finding ways to support kids academically, behaviorally, emotionally, and making sure that the supports are timely, that we're intervening at a point that's going to try to help reduce some of the behaviors or reduce some of the the learning loss. And it's, it's challenging because one of the, I feel like teachers especially are being asked to do less with more, and that's really kind of crunching our system that we have right now. So one of the things that I'm proud of with my work on the board is finding ways to support and adding support staff as needed. And, and being able, you know, it's not our job to, as board members, to run the district, but we have to make sure the district's being run well. So looking at, you know, asking, you know, the superintendent and her cabinet, you know, what do we need? What do you need so that we can have high-achieving kids? I am a proponent of universal pre-K. I, I really would like to see, in the next few years, I would really like to see an alternative setting for our secondary kids that cannot make it through a regular school day. Because that's where we're, there's a lot of energy being spent on students that really need a smaller setting, but they're not necessarily students with IUPs or 504s. But we're seeing a real big increase in behaviors with students that are struggling in what can be a busy, chaotic, demanding day. And, and we need to find alternative programs for them.
Okay. Thank you, Amy.
Michelle, a question that was submitted. Have you attended any PTA, PTO meetings or Board of Education meetings in the past six months to hear directly from parents, parent groups, and school administrators about events and concerns in their schools?
Yeah, so I have served on the board, so I have attended meetings, obviously, since November, started attending in November. I have attended PTO meetings at CRS and certainly, you know, listened to parents in the district where possible, but yes, I have attended those.
Okay. And Leah?
Yes, I've been involved in the PTO at CRS as well and also ran for the vacancy that was prior, in the fall. And so, yes, I've been up to date on.
Amy?
Lots and lots of board meetings, yes. I am a secondary liaison to CES, but Alicia being the counterpart, she's a primary, so I've only gone a few times. I did, before my board work, when my kids were little, I, I did attend a lot of PTO meetings, but, you know, I'm part of the board now.
And Kevin?
Yeah, so as I mentioned earlier, years ago, I sent, went to several board meetings. And last year, I went to three, three or four different board meetings just to see what it, you know, what it's all about, to make sure that I have the right amount of time and things to spend. I also spent some time working with the boosters, the, the St. Sports Boosters Club, on promoting the food truck rodeo that's coming up. And, you know, in the past, I've done lots of coaching things and other things that are no longer pertinent because my children have gotten a little older.
Okay. Thank you. Leah?
How will you provide an inclusive education for students with disabilities?
I think that we already have such fantastic staff that's in place at the schools already. So I think it's working with those professionals that know exactly what that means to provide the resources for those kids and really...
to provide the resources for those kids and really just providing a forum to sit and meet with those that know what resources we would need to have in place, what programs we need to continue, what things they think we can expand upon.
Okay, thank you, Amy.
Well, I, I think we do have a very inclusive environment. We offer a wide variety of services. For example, our buses, I think, travel to 62 different places every day to get kids into different programs that they need. I do feel, again, back to the things I said earlier, especially that universal pre-K. If we can get our littlest kids in here earlier, it will give us an opportunity to identify what those needs are. My own son, who's 27, he benefited so greatly from, you know, intervention services. And it, it made the world of difference for him. And I am a firm believer in trying to move, you know, to, working with the team of the cabinet and the board to move the district forward so that we can deal with some of the challenges primarily in trying to find service providers and people to test these kids. And that's something that we've had conversations about. And it's, it's, those are some of the challenges of trying to make our own school as inclusive as possible, but in meeting the needs of the kids and getting intervention as soon as possible.
Okay, thank you.
So, I think inclusion's really important. I think we do do a great job with it. Everybody, including them in different activities, treating people as people. I mean, everybody's, everybody is a person and they should include, they should be included in everything. There's some, their basketball team, there's, I forget, unfortunately, I forgot the actual name of the team. Yeah, there's, the Unified Sports Program is amazing. I've been to a couple of the games. Activities like that, that interact, not, not necessarily separate people, but interact everybody together and making everybody feel appreciated, wanted, needed, and included.
Okay, thank you, Kevin. Michelle?
And so, I agree that I think our district does, you know, a pretty exceptional job. I've actually learned a lot more than I've ever known about it just by being on the board the last six months and actually have been, you know, really pleasantly, you know, surprised and impressed with the programs that we do have, learning more. I think, you know, what is really important is creating that foundation at a young level, not just about having programs, but really teaching respect and, you know, character and building a culture around that. So, I, and I think we, we do have a foundation of that and certainly throughout the district, focus on the social, emotional learning aspect of really making sure all of the kids are learning, you know, how to treat each other. And I think that's just a, you know, just as important as having, you know, those kind of inclusive programs as well.
Okay, thank you, Michelle. Okay, at this time, we can take a question, one question from the audience. Is there anybody that has a question? Okay. We'll, we're going to do it. Okay. Okay. So, that's all we have time for this evening. I wish you all good luck, and I will turn the floor back over to Kathy Dillon. Okay, this concludes our candidate forum. And we will now move to the boardroom for anybody who'd like to join us for our board meeting. Thank you all for attending.